Okay, we're live.
Okay. Good morning, Akeem.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I'd better, do you have an intro meeting or we need to start the meeting?
Sure. Just one item today, Chairman and Commissioner, and Akeem is here to start the discussion.
Okay.
House Bill 2142.
Well, maybe I'd welcome everybody to thank you again, Commissioners, for agreeing for a special meeting Monday, February 8th at 9:00. So this is another special meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. I call it to order. Madam Clerk, call parole.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Next item, please.
New business, Item A, Discussion of House Bill 2142.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. So we're going to be discussing House Bill 2142. It's the only item on the business at this time, so I'll hand this over to Akeem.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, Akeem Ashford, Communications Director. Today, we're going to talk about House Bill 2142. I'm just going to give some kind of historical background after a meeting last week with KAC, who is doing kind of the lead work on this. It is my understanding that this bill was introduced last week by Ken Corbett, House District 54, which is just northwest of Topeka. This bill really focuses on reimbursement of funds back to those business owners. As introduced, I provided you all a copy of that House bill that's in front of you. This will be heard in front of the Taxation Committee on Taxation, actually tomorrow at 3:30 PM in Room 342. Again, this is House Bill 2142. For more context, I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Papoun, County Counselor.
Good morning. Mike?
Good morning, Sir. Mike Papoun, County Counselor. The reason we had to have a meeting this morning and address this is I've been in discussions with our lobbyist, Jason Watkins. This bill was introduced very late and has a hearing set for tomorrow afternoon, as Akeem said, at 3:30, which means any testimony, or if we want somebody to testify either in person, or more likely by WebEx, we have to have that testimony to Jason by probably about 2:00 today. So any revisions or thoughts that you have on this, we're going to have to be decided fairly quickly so we can make those changes. You should have in front of you a copy of the House Bill 2142. It's a short, one-page bill, and a copy of my latest draft testimony that I prepared. Well, actually, Michael Fessinger in the office, with the tremendous help from Lindsey and Brent, were able to put this together, and I made it more specific to Sedgwick County. But anyway, this bill, what it does is anytime the county would shut down a business, and it's for any reason, if you see from the testimony, we focus on the COVID discussion because it's pretty apparent that that's why the legislature, or this particular legislator is introducing this bill. But it really applies to closing of any business, and at some point, we're going to have to discuss with the County Manager's Office and staff all the instances where the county may close a business. We have a lot of regulations in the county, whether it be for strip clubs, for other types of bars and things, and I don't know if we get into the restaurant, or if that's strictly a city deal, but anytime a business is shut down for any regulatory reason, we would owe that property owner for whatever months it was shut down, that many months times 1/12 to their tax, the amount of tax that they pay, we'd have to reimburse. Not only do we, and we have to reimburse that from the County General Fund. We don't reimburse that from all the different taxing districts that receive these funds. It comes out of our pot. So that, in effect, would be reimbursing the school district, the City of Wichita, and all the other numerous taxing districts we have in this county. So, yeah, just to give you what I understand about the bill, I don't think we think this bill and the form that's in is going to go anywhere. But there are going to be other bills coming down, probably very similar to this, that may be better written and could affect the county in just as adverse a way. And so it's Mr. Watkins' view that we should go ahead and testify against this bill now to try to educate the Tax Committee and legislators about what we do in Sedgwick County in terms of regulating businesses, what our health officer does, the role of the Health Department and all of that, and get our voice out early so when these other bills come that hopefully will be, they'll be better educated on all the different facets of such regulation. But some of the things we have to decide this morning is, are we going to submit something on behalf of the County Commission in opposition to this bill? And if so, are we going to have one of you testify? You can do that remotely. I know that Lindsey and Brent will be there on the testimony with you so that they can help answer any technical questions, any finance questions that come up. But that's one of the questions. Otherwise, Jason had offered late last week to testify if nobody else from the county was going to do that, but it's always more impactful to have a County Commissioner testify than it is our lobbyist. Our lobbyist is there to be in the background, talking to legislators, and not in the forefront testifying. So anyway, that's probably the first question, and then working with that Commissioner to finalize some testimony and get that up to Jason early this afternoon so he can get it filed before 2:30, or 3:30, actually, today.
Okay. Before we discuss, do you want to hit the highlights?
Yeah.
I know we had revisions, we had initials, and then revisions over the weekend, and thanks for everybody.
I might add, Chairman, Lindsey is here in person, and Brent is on the phone if there's questions of that.
Okay. Well, there's a little bit of, it's a great message from what I read, but there's a, it might be worth hitting some of the highlights that you think are important.
Okay. And I'll add, from the draft I sent to all of you yesterday, I'd had a chance to go over it with Jason, too, and a couple of comments that he made. Well, one, that it applies to all businesses, not just COVID, and so make reference to that, and the overreaching of that idea. He also mentioned that the county, and I don't have a testimony, the county may want to, at some point, get into all the different facets of regulation that we get into and where we might close down a business, or go after their license. He mentioned that, and I don't know if we want this in the bill or not, but Jason was just kind of frustrated. It was kind of like, look, you, on the one hand, have legislation that has us with some control over the health officer and making decisions regarding the health decisions of the community. You know, if you're going to punish us for getting involved in that kind of regulation, then why don't you just take it over yourselves? I mean, why are we in the health business if we're going to shut down a business and then have our tax dollars? I mean, it's a huge, I mean, it's an attempt to thwart any of our attempt to regulate. And if, and our citizens are going to expect regulation, so if they don't want us to regulate, then they need to get into the regulation business and leave us out of it, I guess. But anyway, from my testimony, we get into the, first part of it would be, and we'd put this on the station area, whatever Commissioner decided to testify. We clearly make it known that we're in opposition to House Bill 2142, that while it addresses any businesses, its real purpose appears to undermine the county's efforts as the Board of Health to address COVID-19 pandemic. It's really puts an unfair burden and transfer of wealth from residential taxpayers and some businesses in favor of other businesses and commercial property owners. I think as Lindsey and Michael Fessinger pointed out earlier to me, you know, we don't know, too, if, it appears that it rewards the landlord and not necessarily the tenant. I mean, the tenant's the one probably losing the money for being shut down, but we're reimbursing the landlord, which is, again, something that it doesn't address. While I'm clearly no expert on taxes in the county, it appears that any taxes that are made up because of the reimbursement to these businesses will have to be made up by the, obviously, the residential tax owners or other businesses that weren't shut down, which is going to really place an unfair burden on them. We point out that Sedgwick County's portion of the property tax assessment is typically 25% to 30%. So, and the bill doesn't provide any way that we can get this money back from the other taxing districts, that we have to disperse it. So it's going to be quite a burden there. Through Lindsey and Brent, they determined that its effect on the county ranged from a loss of $2.4 million per month if a business was limited to 50% capacity, or $4.7 million per month if a business was fully shuttered, which has an ultimate impact from March 20th to January 2021 of about $25 to $50 million that the county would have to reimburse. Then we go into all the different services that the county provides. In particular, we focused on the Health Department, Law Enforcement, Fire, EMS, Prosecutor's Office, Public Works, all of these people that have been, many engaged in fighting the pandemic, and obviously, very vital services, the most vital services probably that the county provides, and what this will do to these vital services. We point out in the last paragraph of Page 1 that many of these businesses have already been reimbursed by federal dollars or through money that we've distributed through the CARES Act, so in effect, they'd be, in some instances, double-dipping by getting money there and getting their tax dollars reimbursed. And then the closing paragraph just talks about disappears to punish counties, which allowed a health officer to impose closures and limitations. It's inconsistent with the Legislature's previous bill, having County Commissioners have the authority to overturn a health officer's orders and have control over this regulation. And then I say whether the bill's intended to address health officers' orders or closing in general, either way, it interferes with our ability to regulate businesses. If the Legislature doesn't want us to regulate businesses, then you take it over, and you reimburse the businesses when you close them down. But it's unfair to have us be in a position to have to address these concerns with taxpayers in Sedgwick County, but at the same time, not having the ability to regulate without having to be a huge financial impact on the county. So I guess that's where I end up.
Yeah, thank you. That's, I'm always a little nervous about letters, the language used, and the sensitivity of a committee that might be reading it or listening to it. And this appears to me to be a well-written letter and a position that's just factual by nature. So we have a first statement or question of Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions in there, and I do have some statements, but have we checked with the Kansas Chamber or the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce to find out, are they taking a position on this bill?
I haven't asked Jason about that, but I could text him and see if the Chamber's taken a position.
And again, he may be in an awkward position because he does lobby for the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce and also lobbies for Sedgwick County. So I would like to know what he's going to do with this bill, if he's going to testify on their behalf in favor of this bill, and then have the county testify in opposition to this bill. I would like to know that before we...
I can almost guarantee you that's not going to happen, Commissioner, but I'll double-check with him to make sure.
Well, just for the record, on the Property Tax Transparency Bill, he did testify in favor of the bill ahead of me, which was fine. I also testified in favor, but I did provide some challenges of the bill that needed to be addressed by the Committee, and again, you all know about that. So some people would say I was an opponent of the bill, but I think it doesn't really matter whether you want to say you're an opponent or a proponent. The reality is that those issues needed to be addressed. And whereas the Wichita Chamber did not ask for changes in the bill, they just simply said it was a good bill. So we weren't really together on that one. But I would like to just make a couple of comments. You know, I understand that from a legislator's perspective, I have no doubt that they're being pressured by businesses to write this bill. And from their perspective, and again, I'm not saying I agree with it, but from their perspective, they felt like, I think they would say that they feel like they've had an undue burden of government because they essentially have had their, you know, might look at the Fifth or Fourteenth Amendments of the U.S. Constitution, they feel like they've had their property taken without due process. They've been picked on because, you might look at a business and say, they do, you know, Spirit Air Systems makes airplanes, but not really. Spirit Air Systems makes money. And the point of that is every business is in business to make money. But if you take that ability to make money away, but you still give them the burden of government, it seems unfair to them. I would say our tax laws are designed to be fair. That's the whole point of tax policy, is that we look at things normally and say, the burden of government should be divided amongst different ways of getting that revenue so that it's fair. But now, we've established what's fair, we've changed the balance in favor of residents over business. Businesses continue to have a higher burden of government, but their ability to make money's gone away somewhat. So from their perspective, I can see why they wrote this bill. If I was going to summarize what this testimony says about this is, we never stopped providing services, and we needed to do what we did exactly. And the community actually received services throughout the entire pandemic, in fact, maybe more so than normal because of the pandemic. We've done some things we don't normally do. And so the assumption of the legislation is we're sitting on piles of money, and we're just being mean, and we're going to have to give it back. Whereas, that's not true. We've actually spent those dollars providing services. Those dollars don't exist. So if this does pass in its current form, I think what ought to be inserted in this testimony, which I don't think it says right now, so I think it's missing this one point, that is, we would have to either cut services in the future, to have, leave tax rates the way they are, and, if you will, pile up money from not providing those services to pay this back, or a tax increase. And that's really the only two choices we have. And I think that needs to be stated. I would also say, we only pass the budget one time a year, and we pass it in August. Whereas the pandemic, the policy that we've issued is dynamically done. It's done because there's a problem that's developed, and the problem comes and goes quickly. And so we have policies that we have to issue that certainly is not something we do once a year. So I would say that, one thing that's not in this testimony, which I think is the most important part of this, is that this is retroactive back to the January 1st of 2019. If they wanted to pass this, and they made it prospective from the date of passage, we could certainly have a discussion about whether or not we want to continue to restrict businesses in some ways and give up, you know, property tax dollars. That would be a discussion we would have. But it's not fair to us to go back to the beginning of 2019, when we actually already provided those services. I think that needs to be stated in here. And so again, I think that you guys did a great job on this draft, but I think that needs to be the number-one argument, I think. The number-one argument is, we already spent the money providing services. And so to the issue of, we've already provided some funding to these businesses, I don't think it's a good argument because that was specifically for, through PPP, you know, PPE, PPP was for salaries, and the money we issued through the county was primarily for mitigation of COVID-19. It was about PPE and that type of stuff. It wasn't generally for paying their taxes. So in probably most cases, it doesn't really come close to even offsetting the amount of taxes that are due. I talked to one business owner this weekend. He owes $40,000 right now, and he has no idea how he's going to pay that tax bill. And his business is on the verge of shutting down because of it. So this is the type of thing that's going on, and I think that the money we provided from the county is not likely to solve that problem in their mind. And then I would say, one other thing, I think, if we wanted to put one more point in this testimony, that if this was to pass, it needs to be clarified as to when the reimbursement is due. I think it's assumed in the bill that it's due immediately in the current tax year, as if we have the money sitting there. I think it may take years to find the revenues available to pay this back. So is it one budget cycle, or is it right now immediately, or is it multiple budget cycles? I think we need to have that clarified. I would argue it should be multiple budget cycles, otherwise, you're talking about a significant tax increase. And just for the public's awareness, one mil property tax is about $5 million. So if we had to pay back $50 million right now, that would be around 10 mils of property tax for one year. And that's assuming that that would be a one-year reimbursement for what this bill is contemplating. Reality is, I don't think anybody would want to see that happen. So I've said plenty, but I think there's a couple of points that should be made in the testimony if we are going to send this out. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Paragraph four, line number six, does make that point, Commissioner Howell. It says Sedgwick County would have to make the decision to either drastically reduce these vital services or raise taxes on county citizens. So I wonder maybe if we move that up in the testimony. Is that what you were asking to be added?
Well, that's part of what I said. The reality is, I think that it needs to be stated that we've already spent the money. And if they wanted to, if they want us to do this from this point forward, that's a, we can certainly have that conversation about services or taxes going forward. But I think it should be said that we've already spent the $50 million providing services to the community, and that, to me, is the leading, should be like the most leading sentence. This money doesn't exist. And I agree, it is buried in that paragraph, and it's well-worded. This is a great narrative of what's going on. I don't know that legislators will ever get to that point. They're busy, they're going to have a ton of stuff to read on this, and so I don't want to bury that. I want that to be, I want it to jump off the page. So thank you for the comment.
Commissioner Cruz, anything else?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify a couple of things since Commissioner Howell started talking. We have been in contact with Jason. He's watching the meeting today. He says the chamber is tentatively in favor of the bill, but that he's not testifying in favor of it, or he's not in support of the bill. So he is, and the other thing, well, that's all I'd point out at this particular time.
Okay. Well, as Commissioner Cruz pointed out, and to follow along, Commissioner Howell's train of thought, it appears maybe rewording that fourth paragraph to start out with the reducing vital services or increasing taxes, and then go into, I mean, it already says, first line, total spending from County General Fund in 2020 was $192 million, maybe add that we've already spent X money on COVID-related. Well, you kind of go into that in the fifth paragraph, how much we've spent with businesses, nonprofits, $6.3 million, about $10 million. So I'm not sure that wouldn't be just redundant. But I would be okay with just making the first sentence, take drastically reduce services or raise taxes ultimately, and then explain, follow the thought train here. Not sure. Commissioner Dennis, that's just my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, to support some of the comments that Commissioner Howell made, we have spent that money. Somehow, that needs to be very strongly put out, that we spent the tax money that came in, and government does not react really quickly. So what this bill, the way I read it, anticipates is that if someone was impacted by shutdown of any type, that we're just going to write them a check and take care of that. We don't operate that way. We're actually getting ready to start our budget cycle for 2022 here at the middle of this month. And it's a year-long process, and even after the budget is passed and we set the mil levy, then we don't get that money instantly. It's, we won't get it until December and April of the following year. So I don't know that they really realize the total impact it has. If they expect us to write checks instantly, we've spent that money, and I don't know how to say that strongly enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Just for anybody who's watching, so if we had to pay this back immediately, from what Howell said, it'd be about a 10 mil increase in taxes or a drastic cut in services. Can you explain what a drastic cut in services that we provide would look like for the community if they're interested in knowing what that would be?
I'm sorry. It's hard to say.
You want to go?
Just an idea of what could be cut, so people would know that the services we provide?
Sure. Based on the estimates of finance, it would be a $25 to $50 million hit on basically $198 million. I see Lindsey making her way to the podium, but a quarter of GF. So we would have to go in and either lay off people, lay off general-funded positions or programs, or raise taxes. And Lindsey, you might want to go into a little bit more of what you would think a strategy would be.
Sure. So as Tom said, in 2020, we spent $192 million out of the county's general fund. So, and this payment is expected to come out of the general fund. And so while we would have a real struggle to come up with the budget authority to pay for that this year, raising taxes would help us in the future to accommodate that, but really, we wouldn't have any choice but in 2021 to cut services, to come up with budget authority available to go out. And so that's why, if you look at some of those examples listed in the testimony, those are the biggest individual spenders. But of course, finance is funded from the general fund, HR, the Counselor's Office, the Commissioners, our row offices, the District Attorney, the District Court, the Sheriff, 911 employees. We have a wide range of services that are provided out of the general fund, about 42. But when you're talking about this level of spending, let's use a worst-case scenario of $50 million. If we had spending of $192 million last year, we know that we must continue with COVID response this year, and we estimate those figures to be $15 million just for the COVID response. That means we're looking at potentially 30% reductions almost across the board in order to generate enough budget authority to pay this year. It's just simply not workable. So certainly understand the intent, but it would be, this organization would look completely different.
Like our Sheriff's Department and 911, if you needed help, it would be drastically reduced on the services that we provide now.
Absolutely.
I just want to make that very clear, so when people are watching, they realize what this could do to their daily lives. So, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Lindsey, for explaining that.
Mr. Chairman, I need to clarify again, some earlier remarks. The manager's been in touch with Jason. The State Chamber is tentatively in favor of the bill with some changes, but our local chamber is not supportive of this particular version of the bill, so.
Okay. Well, that's helpful. It's helpful to know that the local chamber is a different entity than the state chamber, so, for clarification. So that answers that question. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a follow-up comment. I would say that it needs to be understood also that some of the things we provide are discretionary. We provide funding to the zoo and Exploration Place and Exegy Park. There's things we do because we have a desire to fund those things. It's discretionary spending, and no offense to any of those organizations, we love what they provide. Some of the things we provide are normally not discretionary. We have to provide funding to the court system. We have to provide funding for the elections every year. And if you try not to provide that funding that they need, believe me, they're going to remind you that you have to provide those funds. You really don't have a choice. So when you talk about across-the-board cuts, that's really not a very good understanding of how this works. Some things are going to be cut a lot more than other things. And I think that people need to understand the things that are discretionary, if you want to think of it that way, are going to take the lion's share of this. The biggest burden of this is going to go to those things. And I think that the public really, really enjoys the things that we provide on that type of spending. Most people don't really enjoy the jail, and they enjoy the effect of the jail because we have public safety out there that's doing its job, and that's a very important part of our community. But no one probably really thinks about that so much. It's not something that we have any choice over. We have to provide funding to the jail. But we don't, we make choices to provide funding in many other ways that I think the community really enjoys. For example, our infrastructure. I think we make choices each year on what bridges to fix and what roads to fix, and we have good quality roads in Sedgwick County. Those are choices we make. And if you had to cut that much funding out of the budget, you would certainly see effects that people would... that people, people would certainly notice the effect of those choices. And then secondly, I'd like to say also that this estimate of $50 million is only for about 10 months of the year. If you extrapolate that out, it's about $60 million a year. And by the way, we're still in a pandemic. And if this was to pass, we would want to make a decision right now, are we going to continue our current policies and knowingly give up those property tax funds? Are we going to do something different with our health orders? Because this whole thing is based on the idea that these businesses have had occupancy limits, hours limited, and some of them have been shut down for periods of time since March of 2020. And so as we're, we're still in this pandemic. I mean, we have to make a very conscious decision to do something different or give up that revenue. I would be surprised if we would continue digging the hole the way we are. I think we would have to make a choice on our health order, how that impacts our property tax revenues. But the reality is, I think that since we're still in a pandemic, if we continue what we're doing right now, by the end of this year, you're looking at another $60 million. So people need to understand that as well. Thank you, Chairman.
So how the commission feels, maybe there's an emphasis on how much that we've already spent, added somewhere, and an emphasis on either drastically reduce services or raise taxes. Can we, can we propose to go with this letter with those changes in that paragraph four?
Yes, sir. We can certainly put that more towards the beginning of the, highlight as the beginning of the testimony, and add a few things in light of Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Dennis's concerns.
Maybe put the fourth paragraph as the second, so you have an introductory, and then emphasize the, go right into the meat of it.
Right, and we can.
I do like the fact that we say in the second paragraph, I mean, it, no, I don't want to change the second paragraph, but the realization that when a property owner receives their property tax bill, that the Sedgwick County portion is only 25% to 30% of the total bill, because there's cities and the school districts and everything else is in that bill, or is in that invoice, so to speak, that you get as a property taxpayer. County's just in charge of sending it out and collecting it as the escrow agent and getting the money over to the appropriate entities. So I, that is a nice comment that you put in there about the average 25%, 30%.
Certainly, we can move, move the idea and the fourth paragraph that, and we really didn't mention the fact that it, in effect, takes place retroactively, I don't think in the testimony, we didn't highlight that. We can, we can highlight that and make it very, make it emphatic that we've basically already spent the money for these services and what effect it would have since it applies to the 2021 budget, so.
Okay. Got a couple more questions or comments. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So this will be heard in committee tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow afternoon at 3:30.
And then what is the timeline after that?
Well, what generally happens in the legislature, Commissioner, is at some point, the committee will work the bill to determine whether it has enough committee members to pass, and that's a, and Commissioner Howell can jump in at any time, but that's like a 25-member committee, so it's a pretty big committee. Committee members may have amendments that they may want to make on the bill, which could take some time. You know, a bill like the transparency bill that we dealt with was worked, obviously, very, it's, well, actually, it's still in tax committee. It hadn't passed out that I'm aware of, but it went through the Senate in just almost record fashion. So we don't know, but it'll have to be worked by the committee. There may not even be a majority of the members of this tax committee that support this bill, and it could just die here. Again, I think our concern is there probably will be other bills that go through similar to this, some kind of reimbursement to businesses because of COVID. And so this will be a good start for us to get our message out. The attorney, you know, the state of Kansas was sued on this very issue, on the closing of businesses, and the attorney general was able, I think, to essentially stall that lawsuit and made a public statement, I think, last week, where basically, they stalled this lawsuit with the idea that it was up to the legislature to correct this, and that kind of sent a signal to the legislature to look at ideas to address what happened to these businesses because of the shutdown. And I think he was able to delay the lawsuit somewhat because of that. So I think that was kind of a message to get some of these bills going. I have a feeling there are going to be other, at least Mr. Watkins feels there are going to be other bills coming.
Okay. So it churns through the process, out of committee to the House?
Yeah, then it would have to go to the complete House floor. I don't think we have a whole lot of members from Sedgwick County on that committee, do we, Commissioner Howell?
No, we do not.
So we would probably be more effective contacting our legislators when it comes to the House floor, because that's when it would need to vote, 63 votes to pass. And there's also a belief, I think, among, and I've had some contact with Johnson County too, I think there's a belief among a lot of people that this particular bill, because of what it's trying to do, would never have the support of the governor. And so now you're talking about having veto-proof numbers, which I don't think very many people think this bill is ever going to get, so.
Okay, that was my subsequent, that was my follow-up question. What other counties are going to be testifying? Have we reached out to our other counties that could be affected by this to have a more robust opposition to it?
The Kansas Association of Counties had a Zoom meeting last Friday, and I know the chairman was on it, I know Mr. Fessinger was on it and other people. So they're going to broadly testify against the bill on behalf of all counties. They were encouraging other counties to write letters and send in written testimony in opposition to the bill. My contact, last time I had contact with Johnson County, my source said that it looked like they were just going to take a wait-and-see attitude in front of the committee to see what happened, because they didn't, their lobbyist was telling them that they didn't think the bill was going to go anywhere, and so they weren't going to jump in right at this time. Now, whether that's changed since Friday, I don't know, but that was kind of their position.
I would, I would comment that, yes, I was on that Zoom meeting. Wasn't participating, but there is, it's only about 45 minutes long, and it's available. Maybe, Kate, we can pull that up and share the link to that again. The commissioners have seen it, but we're getting a lot of, it's worth watching because there was, it's only about 45 minutes, like I said, but there was a lot of questions that were, they were taking the questions in real time, and they were coming from all over the state. There were county officials, and, I mean, they were doing a lot of what-ifs and questions, and there was a lot of unknowns, was the response in general, wouldn't you think, Akeem? I mean, they weren't, they couldn't, if you wanted to comment anything further on that, it was.
I think you're absolutely right, Commissioner. You know, they had a lot of scenario-based type things, if this happened, this would happen type deal, so.
Exactly. Some of the, as a matter of fact, some of the things we've addressed in our letter and in some other outside, you know, specifics, so. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to make two quick points. Everyone should understand there's also a sister bill in the Senate, it's called Senate Bill 149, and it does not have a hearing scheduled yet, but I would not be surprised if that also gets a hearing sometime soon. Usually when, when there's legislators that are very motivated to do legislation, they'll almost always introduce exact copies into both bodies, and so, and gets a good sign to us that this is likely to get quite a bit of attention going forward. Second thing I would say is, personally, I think that on the very first paragraph, line six through line 10, where it starts, the sentence starts, "There would certainly be an unfair burden," that sentence, to the end of the paragraph, I would make a, I would like to see a strike that language, because there's a lot of subjectivity in what is fair. And I think that we might end up, and we might end up having to get into an argument about what we think is fair versus what somebody else thinks is fair. I don't know that that's really the point of this testimony. The point of this testimony is, if this was to pass, we've got some problems. And I think that the thing I would, you know, we also talked about moving that one paragraph up, I agree with that, but I think in addition to that, we need to talk about how long we have to pay it back, and when would this, again, if they wanted to make it useful legislation, they should draw a line in the sand and say, from this point forward, here's what we, here's what the consequence of restricting businesses would be going forward, and how many years we'd have to pay this back should this be retroactive. So those are the points, I want to make sure we don't lose those points in the testimony. If you guys agree with that, I'd like to see those things inserted somewhere near the beginning of the testimony, and maybe they should be bulletized. So it would help organize the thoughts, people would understand there's multiple arguments here, and you can see them separately. So, just a thought. Thank you.
Well, I hear what you're saying. That might be asking them to do more detail than need be at this point, from my perspective. Looking at the bill, line nine on the bill says, "They may make application to the Board of County Commissioners." And then like nine, line 13, the application that is determined to be valid for a period of time. It almost, under this, if it passed this way, they would have to apply to the commissioners. And if we ask for a deadline, then we might be burdened with coming up with a fast response or a delayed response. I know your, maybe our hope is that we pay it over time, but I like, I mean, if it's going to be as gray as it is written, then I wouldn't want to be burdened with a deadline approach that have to, if we got hit with 1,000 applications and a 60-day response time, it might be really cumbersome for us all. It's just my thought.
Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to just clarify, I'm not talking about a deadline to get the applications in, I'm talking about changing it so it's not retroactive, so that it would be prospective going forward. If this was to be good legislation, that we would understand if we restrict businesses, we have a responsibility to not take all the property taxes that would normally be due to the county through fair tax laws. I'm talking about making it clear that we're not, I don't want to be retroactive at all. I think that we, for them to change the rules 10 months after we've already taken the money and provided services is not good policy. So I'm talking about changing it so it's only prospective. And that's all I'm asking here. I'm not asking for them to put a deadline to speed things up here, so.
Okay. You're saying, so eliminate all the past and effectively go forward from a?
Mr. Chairman, if you will.
Yep.
The emphasis in my testimony is they shouldn't be getting into our business anyway in regulation. I think any, I think any.
Right, that's a good point.
And which if the commission disagrees with that, they need to let us know. I don't think the point is, okay, you can go ahead and do this, but make it easier for us. I think that tends to make us, that tends to make us somewhat supportive if you do it a different way, and I don't think we should be supportive of this in any way.
Right.
But that's the way it's written anyway. If the majority of the commissioners disagree, then we'll rewrite that portion of the testimony.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that all five of us agree that we want to oppose this bill. I don't think there's any doubt on that. We've already spoken about that we've already spent that money, that we don't have it, that we've got some problems with the way it's written on it being retroactive. We're not quite sure when and how long that we would have to pay it back and so forth. All that is kind of wordsmithing at this point, and I don't know that five of us sitting here at the bench can wordsmith this, because then we start making sausage, which I always complain about. So I guess my recommendation at this point is we have, say, the chairman and Commissioner Howell, because they're both very knowledgeable of this, work with Akeem, our attorneys, and come up with some language that we can get out before 2 o'clock today. That's the only way this is going to happen. I think the purpose of this meeting this morning was to find out what the feeling of the five commissioners were, and I think we know the feeling of the five commissioners at this point in time. We just now need to put it on paper so that we can let the legislators know our concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Well, I don't mind that. At this point, I'm very comfortable with just, again, moving the paragraph four, a little bit of wordsmithing, as you said, up to the paragraph two, and go from there. If it's the will of the commission that we go with that theory, and then anything else that we add will need, or change will need to be, I don't know how we get a commission agreement on that, unless you all believe that whatever we come up with is livable.
Mr. Chairman, we'll be happy to have another draft, draft all the commissioners in the next 30 minutes to an hour after we have a chance to go back and reflect on this, and then any commissioner can make some changes or give us some thoughts if you'd like. We do have to decide how we want to handle this in terms of, do we want a commissioner testifying? Do we want to take action today to approve the chairman to sign written testimony, have Jason testify with that written testimony, or just submit, we can just submit written testimony too and not have anybody testify in person. There'll be a number of people, such as Jay Hall from the Kansas Association of Counties, testifying against it. We don't have to testify in person or web acts, but the commission needs to make that decision.
Okay. My thought is that since Jason Watkins kind of knows the committee, we don't have very many from Sedgwick area, that he might know a better feel for the individuals, and this is a kind of a collective message. It's not necessarily one from any one individual of us. So right now, I'm comfortable if we get a final document to submit and have Jason present it and be available for questions, if he would be okay with that. That's my personal thought, but I'm open to any other comments on who represents. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just my personal thought is, I think that written testimony alone is not a very effective way to do this. I think that it's better to have someone speak up. It's probably best to have someone who's elected official. Again, I appreciate what Jason does, but if an elected official could do it, I think that speaks volumes to the committee. And I think that Zoom is, Zoom is kind of a, it's fine. I think last, when I was up there for the property tax bill, I think Jay Hall with the AC testified by Zoom, and it was a good experience, don't get me wrong. But I think that it means a lot to the legislators that we take time to invest and actually be in front of them personally, if possible. A face-to-face meeting, I think, means a lot. And so if, again, I think the very, the best is a commissioner in front of the committee. Second, that would be commissioner on Zoom, and then maybe parallel to that would be Jason in front of the committee. It depends on how, it depends on how much we want to invest to be effective on being successful here, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, this has kind of been thrown at us real quick, and you said there might be further information and time to submit. So this is our initial request to be on record up there, no matter what committee or what division it comes out of. So I hear what you're saying. With the weather and the timing and everything else, I'm not sure how easy it'll be to have one of us testify in person. I'm not sure how many legislators are going to be in the Capitol as well, but anyway. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Paul said, he may be able to have some new wording available to us in a half an hour or so, so maybe it'd be better if we take a recess and reconvene at, let's say.
10:30.
10:30, and then come back and try and make a final decision on this.
That'd be right.
Yeah, that'd be fine, sir.
Let's, okay with the commission, we'll recess until 10:30. I hope your calendars are free, or if not, we got to make them free. Okay, we will stand recessed, and we'll return at 10:30. Thank you.
Okay, we're back, Tony. We're on, okay. We've returned from our recess and there's a... So I think there's a revised version of what we talked about earlier.
Yes.
I'll hand it to Mike Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counsel. We're having redlined versions of the testimony and a clean version to show you. And it's being copied right now, should be here any minute. I can guarantee you with CFO and two attorneys, you're not the only ones making sausage. So you want to look at this.
I hear you.
It was quite the last 30 minutes.
Right, I bet it was. That's why we gave you an extra 10.
Appreciate that.
Well, while you're working, while they're getting that together, there's been a little bit of discussion and based on previous comments, it does seem to be valuable that a commissioner present either in person, which could happen, or by Zoom second. But I looked at my schedule and if the will of the commission is for me to present, be glad to do so. I'd try to get up there. Haven't been on the turnpike in a couple of months, so it'll be fun.
Hopefully the roads aren't too bad?
Yeah. I'm sorry, what?
We were commenting on the roads.
Oh. With masks, you know, I see eyes and I don't know.
Yeah.
Trying to read eye language. And that does remind me that the order in the past and currently, the health order, it does allow for no masking for political speeching, speaking, things like that. So for the public that's watching, we try to mask as best we can. But to articulate, to understand, most of us will release our mask during the speaking part, which is fine. I'm sorry? And we have Plexiglas as well. That's true, the majority has had.
Yeah, not me, I don't want to...
The majority has had COVID and so has the supporting manager and so has the attorneys. The clerk, Madam Clerk, please state if you've had COVID. All right. Okay.
We're gonna need a red pen.
Okay, bear with us while we are trying to quickly review. Unless, Mr. Papun, unless you can guide us. So essentially, did we move that previous paragraph four and rewrite it up to the second position?
I think we tried to incorporate some of that in the first paragraph, too.
Yeah, looks like it. For emphasis. Yeah, thank you, Lindsay.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. And for the record, Lindsay Perusso, CFO, I realize I failed to say that earlier.
That's right.
Because I know you forget me.
Good morning, Lindsay.
So we made a number of changes to the text of the last legislation. So basically, or I'm sorry, the last testimony. So basically, we moved up the portion that had been requested to paragraph two, where essentially, we talk about the fiscal impact immediately and the fact that the budget had already been approved. And then that our only option then for this calendar year would be to cut services. And then looking to the future, addressing that point that the Commissioners had made, either we will have to raise taxes because this will be an ongoing issue, or we would have to deal with recurring service reductions into the future. So then we shifted up, I think, paragraph five to talk about the actual impact, to try and give some context to what types of services are funded out of the county general fund. We talk about how it would represent roughly a 26% reduction relative to 2020 spending. And then also give some context that even though these businesses may have been closed, there were still services that were being provided, especially through the Health Department with COVID protection, law, fire, EMS, et cetera. Then a part that had been toward the top got shifted down a bit, talking about the proportionate burden on Cedric County government because the county is expected to pay 100% of that tax bill, even though typically, our portion is only 25 to 30% of that actual tax bill. And then I think the rest looks pretty well like what you had seen in terms of what COVID support was provided to businesses and the types of support they're receiving, as well as that final paragraph.
Okay, and we didn't... So the last paragraph is word for word, is that right? Pretty much. And the next to the last is pretty much word for word. Okay, is there any other... Some more comments about this revised edition? Commissioner Cruz?
I think this is great. I guess one thing to Commissioner Lopez's point earlier, to put a tangible, relatable way for people to understand what services are going to be cut. So if we're going to cut $9 million in emergency communications, does that mean that we'll have less dispatchers? Does that mean that you're going to be on hold a lot longer when you call 911? Is that a reduction in staff, meaning there'll be less call takers, those kinds of things? I wonder if, you know, and maybe that's a sidebar that we could add, maybe not necessarily put this in here, but notes that Chairman or anybody could say in addition to on top of that. I mean, we already have a pretty good weight in comm care. And so those, I don't see that really listed here specifically. But I feel like, I feel like those sorts of really tangible things that people themselves are going to be utilizing could be addressed a little bit better, maybe in an ancillary text.
And that's no problem. And I just wanted to quickly address why we didn't have comm care. So that doesn't operate within general fund, since all these payments have to happen within the general fund. We're just kind of trying to restrict it on, here's the activities. So certainly, yes, we could include things, you know, Commissioner Howell earlier mentioned the zoo. You know, what would that look like for a zoo or for Exploration Place or for 911 or for some of those others? We can definitely put that together.
Okay, thanks.
Right, and that can be verbalized as well, for sure?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm working my way through it personally. Either of you have your initial comments yet? Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is an improvement, but I would, if I was writing this personally, I would delete paragraph five entirely. I think that the points it's making are not good defenses of our side of this. And again, I think we're picking a fight on this issue of fairness. I don't think it's necessary commentary. And then I also think that the bill is missing something that I, and I mentioned this earlier. If this was to pass in any form, we have to have it clarified as to when this money is due. So I would argue, is it due, I mean, I guess I would ask a question, is it due right away or is it due in one budget cycle or several budget cycles? I think it's important for us to understand that. So I guess that's my comment, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez?
In paragraph five, as Commissioner Howell was talking about, I do think it's important that we make sure that people know that, you know, the burden of this is really going to fall to the residents in Cedric County. I think that's a really big thing for people to understand. I know we're talking about how we can, you know, reduce what, you know, what services will be reduced, but also thinking about like the zoo and Exploration Place. I mean, one thing that I feel like we talk about or I've heard talked about a lot is really how do we continue to grow our economy and really keep our young, you know, young professionals here? And I think cutting services to the zoo and Exploration Place and other places that young families would want to take their kids is, and I think that's important, and not to put in here, but I do think that's important to be understood.
Okay. I tend to agree that, I mean, it is some information that would be public for the community to understand. So I'm still in favor of kind of leaving paragraph five in at this point. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only concerns about paragraph five were that most of the things we talked about in there weren't general fund spend, expenditures. And what we're really worried about is what the impact of this is going to have on our general fund. So I think we're kind of mixing apples and oranges when we start talking about the CARES funding. Granted, we gave a lot of CARES funding out, we spent $99.6 million. But does that have any impact on the general fund? On what our big concern is, is we're going to have to spend this money out of general fund coming up. And I don't know that paragraph five accurately portrays what our main concern is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, maybe a sentence at the end of this says all of this would, does not mean that it's in excess of what we would have to do to increase our general fund spending somehow. I don't know, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I think it's a reminder of what we did do to try and mitigate loss from businesses. So I think it's a good paragraph to leave in. I think it shows that we took measures, but the money that we received from the federal government, we tried to make the burden a little less as harsh on our taxpayers and the businesses that were shuttered during this. So I think it's a good indication of the things that we did do and a good reminder of how we did utilize those funds we received that we could have kept for ourselves as a Cedric County government. But we decided as a whole to then grant that money to businesses in our community to help them out. So I'd be in favor of keeping it.
Okay. Okay. I do, one, two, three, four, I do like that we've kept in there about all taxing entities, 25, 30%. Oh, Commissioner Howell, excuse me, I'm sorry, but I didn't see that.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, I just have a question. For counties that just follow the state's orders, even though they may have health officers, they may have just adopted state's orders as is without any local consideration, they would not be subject to this provisions of this bill, is that correct? They still may have shuttered businesses, they still may have done some things, but the question is, because they didn't do it themselves, it was a state policy, they would not be subject to the provisions of this bill?
I believe that's correct. Commissioner Howell, it says...
Line three, by county.
Yeah. By county, yeah. It would be, it'd only apply to businesses that were shut down by county government, not by the governor or any other entity.
It's a technical question, but if our policy lined up with the state's policy on some provision, do we still have to have liability on that provision even because we actually mimic the state's policy? Do we still have liability on some of those things?
Mike Fessner, Assistant County Counsel, this came up during the KAC meeting.
Yes.
The answer is, we're not sure. The bill doesn't specify. We had an order in place, a state's order, then superseded ours, some would say. But we really, I think at this point, that's just not answerable.
I guess my point is, I think, generally speaking, the county was less restrictive than the state. Characterize it, I mean, I think that we were slightly less restrictive than the state in most cases. So I think the question should, maybe that question should be part of our testimony, is we don't understand, you know, do we have liability or not? Because it's not clear in the law, in this proposed language, it's not clear.
I would add, Mike, that that's one of the points that was brought up on the call. And I think that the KAC was going to testify on a number of these unanswered gray areas. A lot of gray areas, and that's just one example of that.
Right, it was recommended that we focus on really the impact of this county. And that's what we attempted to do.
I think that's right. I mean, I respect what you're commenting to, Commissioner Howell, but I think we're all playing a role here, it sounds like. And they were asking the counties to be specific to their county impact, if I recall.
That's mine.
And again, it might be worth everybody rewatching that total confusion of questions that was coming at us, or coming at them.
I guess my thought would be... Well, I guess my thought would be, then we're trusting someone else to make the point and I don't know.
Well, because it's like a statewide.
If that's good enough or not. Pardon me, sir?
I'm sorry. Maybe it was, it was more of a statewide issue, not just really a county specific.
I just think it's a very important, important point, so I don't know who's going to make that point, assume the KAC will make that point, but we're trusting them to do a good job to make that point and we're not going to make the same point. So we can coordinate our testimony and trust them to make that point for us, I guess, but that's a pretty important point in our, in our concerns, I think. So if we don't mention it, that's fine, I just want to make sure that it's clearly communicated to the legislators that that's a problem in the bill and.
Yeah. So noted for me, I think if I'm the person testifying, then I'd be glad to add verbalization of that, because I'm sure there's going to be some questions. We understand that Johnson County may not be active in this right now, so if I'm up there, then we're the largest county represented at this point. But again, it changes.
I will double check with that today, Commissioner, see if Johnson County's weighing in.
Okay. And I so noted that here on this final draft. Okay. Unless there's a specific addition or correction motion, I, we need a motion to approve this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that the board approve this testimony subject to minor technical changes and authorize the Chairman to testify in favor of this bill, pardon, in opposition to this bill.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this testimony with minor technical adjustments and invite you to testify tomorrow.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Noted, there is, there is a couple of typos, I mean, whatever, but okay. Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. As many things come before us, I am torn between supporting something that I, I have problems with in part, but I support part of it and/or whether I oppose it, even though there's got parts that I do support. So I don't know how to vote on this, but if paragraph five was removed, I would support it. I don't know that I can support it as it's currently written. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I don't see any other comments. Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. My thanks to everybody and we'll continue. If anybody, if any commissioner receives any information that's of valid and authoritative, being Johnson County or maybe a state legislator or whatever, please share it to Mike so we can make sure that we're all in understanding. So we have today, so tomorrow, the hearings at 3:00. So Jason, if he's on the phone, he's going to make sure that we'll submit this testimony once you hold off until about 2:30 or something.
Due at 4:00.
It's due at 4:00?
It's due at 3:30.
3:30?
24 hours.
So he can submit that electronically, I assume, right?
We would send him a PDF copy and then he would make the copies and submit to the committee.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Dennis has a comment?
Just a question, can someone give us a list of all the representatives that are on this committee in case we know any of them so that we can contact them if we've got personal contacts? Thank you.
Okay. That'd be helpful. Okay. I don't, I think we're, we're good. So thank you, Commissioners, again for last minute attending another special meeting that was not COVID related, although it kind of is. So, okay, with that, we will stand adjourned.